Would like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order at 8:37 PM. Present are council members Bressard, Glassburn, Heeman, Kelly, Limbert, Schuman, Williamson, our clerk of counsel, our planning and development director, safety service director, and our human resources director, our finance director, and our guests this evening. On tonight's agenda is a subject that we have been talking about actually since for quite a few years now. We brought it up again during the budget hearings for this year's budget. And then in January, we had asked our council clerk Maserolo if he could during the July recess, look at options for our council as far as expanding our ability to communicate with our residents as far as our council meetings go, make sure that we are being transparent and easily accessible to them as far as legislation goes and that type of thing. And so that had those conversations that happened before the COVID-19 pandemic. And I think that we've all come to realize after March, the need for us to upgrade our equipment in council chambers and make this a reality because we're not going to be able to go back to the way that things were unfortunately before. And as I mentioned, I know that it's a priority for all of our council members to be able to communicate more actively with our residents. So Clerk Maserolo, if you could please, I know that you did send some of this information out to all of our council members for them to read before tonight's meeting. If you could please go over what you sent out and talk a little bit about what you found during your research.
Yes, Madam President. I was asked to look into the options for expanding access to council and potentially to the committee meetings. While I looked at video only options, I also spent a little bit of time connecting with some companies that do agenda management. I provided council, as you mentioned, a brief written overview last week regarding some of the potential options on both. Before I quickly go over them, I wanted to say that the Director of Finance has said at a meeting prior to our going on break, one of the things the city was looking to do was use some of the COVID money to purchase equipment for broadcasting meetings of council along with boards and commissions as a potential option. So in talking with several of these companies, I was asking if COVID money might be able to be used. And it turns out that COVID money can be used if we have any available to cover most, if not all, of the cost to buy the equipment and potentially for the first year of operation if we go with any of these companies. Regarding equipment, no matter what route we go, I've talked with any of the companies I've talked with, we would need to provide our own camera equipment. I know there's currently equipment in chambers. I'm trying to get more information on it. It's hard to kind of gather. Right now, the only thing I can really say about it is that a former safety director had it installed, and I'm not sure if it's even ever really been used. If it works and it's compatible with whatever we choose to do, there is the potential to use it. However, if you, most of you have been in that back room, the controls for it are in the back room. It's kind of like a little TV broadcast booth back there. So we would need to have somebody to man that. So I'm making an assumption that if you guys move forward, that we'd want to purchase new cameras. And obviously, if we were to stream committee meetings, we would need a camera in that room as well. So we'd have to get some more detail on what kind of cameras we wanted depending on what we use. There's a wide variety. We could spend anywhere from not even, we can find stuff for under $100 to we can spend a couple thousand dollars depending on the quality and what we need. But before we move in, before we get the type of cameras we want, I think it's important to find out what we want, how we want to broadcast. So the first thing I looked at was cable, is that was one of the things that had a lot of council members talked about is if we could put, if we could get back on cable. The best option for cable would be to do recorded meetings and not go live. Even our remote go-to meetings could be played on cable. We would just need to convert the recording to the proper format. There would be no cost to the city other than our time in recording and uploading the content. Alls we'd have to do is upload it in that right format. That would, as I said, the option. We wouldn't need to go with any other companies. We might need to buy a video converter to convert the video formats into the right format. But other than that, there'd be no cost. The next option would be to look at using a YouTube or Facebook Live to broadcast our meetings. This option was set up for our first meeting in chambers after the pandemic started where we did not have a quorum. It does provide some advantages that the meetings would be broadcast live and people would have limited opportunity to comment even if not attending the meeting, so long as we had someone monitoring the comment section. This would also be free as we'd be just using their service to do it. The downside is that we'd have no technical support if we have any issues. Another downside is if we do have a Zoom meeting, I don't know that we'd be able to meet our Zoom or go to meeting, we'd be able to broadcast that live through that without having a box, like the BoxCast option, which was the next option that I discussed that was kind of, that is here below. And the problem with that would be then is if we did have to go back remotely, we might have issues with people who are used to looking at YouTube not being able to find our videos there at that time when we're meeting remotely. BoxCast is a method that's being currently used by Avon Lake to broadcast their meetings. It provides multiple outlets to stream, supposed to be easy to set up. If council decided to broadcast both committee and council meetings, it could be done with one box. It would just take about 15 minutes to disconnect and reconnect to new equipment if meetings were on the same night. It allows for us to stream on multiple outlets and our website, although some outlets such as Roku might require us to create an app. The way this is done, it would work so we could do both in-person meetings and if we use Zoom, we could, our go-to meeting, we could plug it right into the box and it would be able to stream it. There's a one-time $399 per box fee along with an annual fee of $2,388 to use the service, but technical support is provided. And this would be the first option that would provide us additional support beyond our IT department. The final video-only option I looked at, looked into is Granicus. Local communities such as Lakewood, Hudson, and Green all use the video-only option from this company. This company also provides agenda management software, which I'll briefly discuss in a moment. But this company is very similar to BoxCast in that they provide a box to plug our video into. And like BoxCast, it can easily stream in-person or remote meetings using the same link for residents. There's a one-time $4,500 fee per setup and an annual fee of $6,336 that increases yearly. While it is the most expensive, if we decide to use them for agenda management, everything would flow seamlessly and we'd have complete technical support all around from video streaming to the management software. I'm going to touch briefly on the agenda management software options without talking about each company specifically. Admittedly, the agenda management software is expensive. And while our city has done just fine without it, I wanted to include these companies as part of this discussion, as I think it is important to think towards the future as well. Each company has its own pros and cons, but the software all basically works the same. It has the potential help with workflow management to ensure there isn't confusion over legislative requests, et cetera. It can send out agendas or email lists with a click of a button, so we don't have to use the Gmail account anymore. It provides transparency in that it allows residents to see legislation prior to its reading and makes legislation easy to find as it is at the click of a button on the agenda. Depending on the company and the features we decided to add, it provides the opportunity for public to comment on the record on four items prior to the meeting. If legislation is amended, it is updated everywhere with a click of a button and council members can access the legislation easily during meetings through the agenda as well. Some of this we are currently capable of doing on our own. However, if we publish the legislation and amend it, we would need to make sure we change that legislation everywhere, whereas this would do it in just one click. There are other features such as being able to timestamp video, so after a meeting, residents are taken directly to that discussion. And even if this isn't something the city wants to consider at this point in time, I thought it was important to provide some information on it now, as there is potential Use Care Act funding for this if it's available. But more importantly, even if the timing isn't right, if the goal is to be more accessible to the public, I wanted to point out there are options out there to help engage residents that can tie into video streaming. That hopefully provides a brief overview to help kind of start the discussion and determining which route council would like to go. If we do want to go with any of these routes, and if there is CARES Act funding available, we would probably need to have a decision by the end of December in order to meet the CARES Act deadlines.
Thank you, Clerk Maserolo. Counsel, any initial questions or comments from what you've read and what our clerk has presented to us this evening? Councilwoman Heeman, and then Councilman Glassburn.
Oh, I think Councilman Glassburn had his hand up first, Madam Chair, so I'll defer.
It doesn't matter what order, we'll all get to it. I did want to mention a few things from our, as Clerk Maserolo referenced earlier, debut with YouTube and Facebook, and what I've seen with the Board of Education. First off, I wholeheartedly support Chuck's notion that we should look at different or a new camera setup for any of these options. In the grand scheme of things, the pricing of this has gone way down. That's why there's videos and cameras and cell phones at this point. But we do have a very substantial historical legacy asset, which is the microphone systems, both in council chambers and in the committee room. Those are high-quality audio feeds that could be just fed in as an audio line into any of these potential options. So we don't need to necessarily buy everything. And in some regards, the audio of our meetings might be more important to any kind of live or rebroadcast viewer than the beauty of our faces. So I'm excited that we do have some assets already. I mentioned the school board. The school board has had some very lively agendas with them, potentially closing schools and whether they were going to be online or not. The format they have used has been, I think it's go-to meeting for their, for their actual board members and staff, but then they rebroadcast it simultaneously on Facebook. The advantage of that has been it pings anyone who follows the school district that the meeting is live. And so their meetings have, with lively agendas, have had 300 to 500 people watching live on Facebook. Their more mundane meetings have held around 50 to 75 viewers. So I think that some method, whether it's YouTube, Facebook, that offers the residents very easy interaction and very direct, like the schools seem to have come upon, would be a real asset. And that, again, has the advantage of being live. The last thing I just wanted to mention is Clerk Maserolo referred to encoding any of these video feeds, whether it's web cameras, nicer cameras, et cetera. I presently do have the software to do that in the interim if we want to test out. I know we don't have a very long deadline. I can encode any of that stuff. But it's also not tremendously expensive to purchase. So I think we have, and Clerk Maserolo, please jump in if I'm misstating this. I think we have a pretty low-cost threshold to get video and to do some of these things. And then we have another tier of whether we want to step up to the agenda management and the more complex features. So I would support either direction, but we do have some assets. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Heeman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, you know, actually don't, for me, what's important also is the audio and then the ability to have a good number of residents be able to participate and ask questions and/or, you know, be live with us. That's kind of important, I think. One of the things I've noticed since we've been doing the go-to meeting is that, you know, there have been residents that we've never seen at council meetings that now have jumped in to some of our committee meetings and our council meetings. And I think that that's a very nice opportunity for them, that their, that meetings are stored and can be viewed at a residence, like an on-demand, like a YouTube, or, you know, that's fine as well. But the interaction, I think, is important. I'm also a fan, so long as the technology doesn't move too quickly. So I guess the question is upgradability with regard to, you know, the hyperlinking to the agendas and being able to make those revisions quickly. I don't know currently how many residents receive our agendas by email or however they get that. But I would think that that's quite a task to try to keep up with when in fact, you know, the agenda is just updated and boom, it's out there. You know, that hyperlinking for projects has, I've used it, you know, for, gosh, almost a decade now. But and at the time, it wasn't hard, it was kind of hard to do. You had to figure it all out. So I do like that feature. I like the ability to bookmark and just go to somewhere if that's all you want to participate in, like as a resident feature. So I just don't know how quickly that would outdate itself. So I would rely on, you know, Chuck to sort of be our guide to tell us what that, the usability of that feature going forward and whether or not it truly would be valuable. Thank you.
Any additional questions at this point?
Yeah, I'm sure.
And, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Williamson?
Thank you. Thanks, Chuck, for putting this all together for us. My only question or maybe comment or concern is if we're going to go and do this, I just think that we should do the agenda management system, invest one time, and be done. Because I think the back-and-forth stuff, I mean, we've, this go-to meeting, I know Mr. Schuman's been having an issue too, but I keep getting errors on my computer screen that say it's overloaded and it's shutting down. And that's why I keep losing everybody. But I don't have this issue on Zoom. So again, that's two totally different animals. But at this point, I'd be in favor of going toward an agenda management system capability. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly, then Councilman Schuman.
Thank you. I think it's important that we try to get back into council chambers as quickly as possible. We're certainly having enough issues with these meetings. People coming and going and having issues with their computers. As far as what system we go to, I would certainly want to leave that to somebody a lot smarter than I am. Technology-wise, I still have a Polaroid camera. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Schuman, then Councilman Limbert.
Mr. Kelly, I was raised Amish, so I think I'm, I've got one up on you there. I've just, so we never actually voted on whether we were going to allow our meetings to be broadcast. Isn't that something we should do before we even talk about spending money on this? I'm just asking, I'm not saying I wouldn't vote for it. I'm just curious about the parliamentary procedures here. Thank you.
Sure. That would, that would be something that, that we would vote on. At this point, we're just having a general discussion and we just have asked our clerk to explore different avenues for us to go to. But absolutely, that would be a majority of council decision. Councilman Limbert.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I think just where my thought was at, looking through the different options was twofold. One is I agree with Councilwoman Heeman that, you know, having the recording is probably as important as any video for a follow-up review. I thought that, my thought is kind of opposite from the approach of going, going big or go home and get everything at once. I feel like this is a new, new process. And while some other groups within the city have started it, the idea of going with something that's deeper or free to get an idea of how we want to run it and what are the benefits and drawbacks before actually investing money on it, that would, that would probably be my preference. It seems like having attended the school board meetings via their, their Facebook Live or some other avenues that I've reviewed via some of those methods, there's, there's definitely some, you know, that seems to be hugely beneficial to get more people aware of the meeting. I think we have to all talk about though, before we invest in anything, how do we want to run a virtual meeting with commenting and things like that? There's a, you know, as the clerk mentioned, there's a lot of oversight now. If you want to have that be an actual avenue for residents to engage in the meeting. Now you're talking about having people monitor that and determining what questions to answer and which ones to put on the side for frequent asked questions, et cetera. So there's a lot of things to think about with that, with whatever avenue we go with. And because of that, my thought would be you start, start simple and then grow from there. I realize we could potentially leverage some COVID money, but it also sounds like we have already budgeted a good amount of that for other, other projects so far, assuming we invest in those. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Glassburn, and then Councilwoman Heeman.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion on the hand raise. If Director Copter is still with us, Chuck sent a bulletin the last day or two that there was a second round of monies being awarded to counties. It looked to be about 50% of the size as the first round for the COVID relief funds, which would then eventually filter down to us. Do we have the expectation, if Director Copter is around, of additional funds? Do we have any sense for that? Do we have a sense of priorities for those funds? That might, that might be germane to this.
Did you say that Clerk Maserolo got some information? Because I didn't receive it, that there's additional funds from the county.
The state, through the controlling board, it looks like they awarded another tranche of COVID relief funds in the amount of about 175 million, which is a little over half, I believe, of what was the first round. So it looks like we might be getting a 50%, assuming they use the same formula, a 50% bump in addition to what we've already received.
Um, you know what? I can't respond to that because I don't know. But that would be great. Because we have a lot of things that could be funded. So, and this is one of them as well. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. I also just briefly wanted to mention, Council President, we have, I was hoping at some point, and this may not be the time for it, to also learn about what, if anything, needed to be further done or was being done to get us back into council chambers, to Councilman Kelly's point. And I didn't know if we should be viewing this as competing for funds in parallel, in tandem, et cetera. So it may be premature to answer that, but just wanted to raise it.
Uh, thank you. Just before Councilwoman Heeman, I go to you, just to quickly follow up to Councilman Glassburn's point. I would say that the priority for us to get back in council chambers would be parallel to also broadcasting our council meetings and reaching out to residents in this, in this format. Again, having had these discussions for, literally going on years now, trying to figure out how we could afford this and how we can reach more residents and that type of thing, I don't see them as, as competing issues at all. In fact, I see this as, again, an opportunity to engage more residents, whether they feel comfortable coming up to a city council meeting or just don't have the opportunity to and would like to go back and watch what happened at a council meeting, or perhaps look up issues that are important to them that we had discussed. Before Councilwoman Heeman, I know Director Glaner is still on with us. And I know that in June, when we had met as a committee of the whole, we did briefly talk about the notion that council chambers does need to be prepared for, for us to return. And we had talked about the ability for our service department to perhaps build the Plexiglas enclosures around our council members' seating areas. I know that Councilwoman Williamson had mentioned at the time that she had seen a really nice prototype of this at the, one of the county courthouses, which, you know, is something that, that we as a council would, would love to kind of get an update on. Again, Director Glaner, I know you weren't expecting this question, but if we could ask at this point, where are we with that as far as getting council chambers prepared for council?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Madam President, I'm sorry. Yes, the, we do have the spit yards, as you know, have been put in place. We can build more. We have the opportunity and the ability in-house to build any type of enclosures or barriers that you would need. We do have council chambers laid out because we are carrying on with Mayor's Court. We have social distancing marked in the seats so that people sit far enough apart. We also have just received our electric static sprayers so that the council chambers can be completely sprayed down if necessary. And again, when we do Mayor's Court, we have someone here that checks temperatures when anybody comes in, and that's something that can be done also. So the council chambers can be disinfected every night. We had talked, Director Gall and I had talked a while ago that if and when we come back to this, that we could bring somebody over on afternoon shift, and there'd actually be somebody here to disinfect prior to and even during, if necessary, for meetings.
Thank you. Councilwoman Heeman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some of the things I had, I wanted to inquire about have already been addressed, but I'll reiterate just a little bit. It would be important to me to want to be back in council chambers. I think that, you know, we've asked our residents to go to the rec center. We've, you know, we've done all of those things. And I think that for us to be back there is critically important. It's been far too long. And we're having Mayor's Court and those other things. So I think we should convene in Mayor's Court just as soon as, or I'm sorry, in council chambers as soon as we possibly can. Secondly, I, I do think that it's important to be able to engage the residents and have them participate and/or be able to see our council meetings. But not only council meetings, I think committee meetings should also be included and are very important. That's actually where, you know, the bulk of our business is done. And I think that it's cumbersome, particularly for older folks and, and those with families. You just can't, you know, put your kids to bed and leave. So I think it would be very good if they could participate. I, the agenda management is something I'm interested in and would like to know more about it. And I think that, that to pursue some of the CARES Act money for portions of this is, I think, a perfectly acceptable, you know, method to try to pay for whatever portions might qualify. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Glaner.
Yes, Madam President. Having said that we are, you know, that it could be done, we are moving Mayor's Court over to the community cabin because of the construction that's going on with the lobby and the restrooms at City Hall. So timing may have to be moved around according to the construction. So council chambers would be available, but there will be some construction going on. And therefore, we're moving Mayor's Court over there during that construction period.
Thank you for the update. Clerk Maserolo.
Council President Jones, as far as the software, I, if we still want to go with the, the, kind of the free options to start and kind of move on from there, I'm rather sorry that you want to do that. And I can ask a couple of these companies to come in and present to council, if that's something council would like. That's completely up to them, just so I can kind of get an idea of what they can, what they, what they offer. And also, there would be some potential for boards and commissions, if they're interested, to also potentially use some of this, especially agenda manager software programs.
Thank you. Director Lieber, do you think at this point, there is an interest in our boards and commissions to partner with council on, on something? to partner with council on something like this?
Thank you, Madam President. I think there are a few fundamental differences between council meetings and board and commission meetings. And I would say the biggest one is that the biggest object of interest for residents attending board and commission meetings is normally a set of plans or documents that's being reviewed by that board or commission. So I do think that there is merit in having some system that can broadcast images. But in our case of boards and commissions, it's probably less important to broadcast the actual members and more important to be able to broadcast the plans that are before the community so that residents tuning in can relate to a drawing or, you know, a project or an elevation or, you know, a picture or an image. So I do think that, you know, there might be some compatibility and overlap, but it might be, there might be some differences, and we'd have to talk about what those are and see how maybe your tools could benefit us. We have been able to link our agenda items to case files we store on our website. So I do think our website is something we already pay for. So to the extent council can leverage that to some extent, you know, I think that would be a positive thing as well. We'd be happy to help support council in putting any more content, pieces of legislation, that type of thing, online. But I guess I'd have to learn a little bit more about the specific programs you're considering. I would like my assistant to take part of demos too, since she's primarily the one that engages with the materials and posts them online and deals with the commission members. I certainly think there's potential, but there are some differences that were maybe not one-size-fits-all in this case. But thank you for having us be part of this conversation.
Thank you. Clerk Mazzarolo, so what we're looking at, though, we could, if we chose to go in a certain direction, there's the opportunity for us. So for example, if we chose to do BoxCast, we would be, I'm assuming we would then be hosted on our city's website. In addition to that, there's the option for us to also feed into cable. So as far as when council members are thinking about making these decisions in the next few weeks, which is something I'm going to ask the council to do, is to make a decision in the next few weeks so that if we have the opportunity to use any CARES Act funds, that we are going to do so. I want, I guess I just want to know a little bit more as far as we're not boxing ourselves in, so to speak, into just like one type of way to communicate or way to move forward. As some of our council members have already expressed, I certainly don't want to get into a situation where if the technology is changing within the next five years, I mean, I really want to make sure that we're making good decisions, good financial decisions that will literally propel us into the future, so to speak.
I'm not great with the terminology, but basically BoxCast is an encoder. So that's allowing you to encode things and push out on different platforms. We can do the same thing with a camera, kind of like what we did that one meeting, I think it was the first meeting in April. Without paying for an encoder like that, we can go straight, but we'd have to go straight through that company's platform. So I don't think we could do YouTube and Facebook Live at the same time. BoxCast, it's my understanding, would give us the ability to be on multiple platforms at the same time. But yes, if we were to purchase BoxCast, we could record that, and we could go out live, and then we could take the recording. And if it's not recorded in the right format, we can convert it. And then we can also post that on our cable channel to be shown on cable at times and play at the times that we want it to be, as many times as we want, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. Councilwoman Heeman.
Thank you. I was having directional difficulties. I was wondering, is it possible, Director Gallo, to have our IT department, you know, take a look at these options and sort of weigh in and/or, you know, whether or not Council President and Council Clerk would object to that, just to maybe have their input about these choices?
Yes, that would be no problem. No, yeah, no objection. Clerk Mazzarolo, how comfortable do you feel reaching out to some of the companies that you spoke to and ask them to give a brief demonstration to our city council, possibly on September, that second Tuesday of September?
I'd be perfectly fine to ask them. I just want, I mean, I would assume we'd probably want to do one that's, like, maybe the BoxCast, that's just the video only right now. So you guys can ask them more specific, detailed questions, and then maybe pick like an agenda management company. I mean, if there's any ones that you have preferences on. Otherwise, I can kind of go for ones that I just kind of from feeling they're doing quick demos that I've had, which ones I kind of like. Or I can go for one that I kind of like the best. But I'm sure they'd be willing to do it.
Okay, thank you. If any council member feels strongly about one company or another that the clerk has presented to us, please let him know. And just to weigh in as well, I know Councilwoman Williamson mentioned this, but the Agenda Management software, I do think that is something that council members should consider when we're looking at these packages. And again, it's just another way to engage the residents in what we're doing and what we're considering. And I think that that is something that I would like for you to think about as we move forward with this. Are there any other specific questions or comments that anyone wanted to add to this discussion thus far? Okay, thank you. I know it's late, and I appreciate you all hanging in there so that we could start to finalize this discussion. And I will then ask our clerk to move forward and schedule some organizations to come in and speak to us on the 8th, give us some demos so that we do have a better idea of what we're dealing with and what's going to be asked of us. And Director Glaner, I know that you had asked to speak to council briefly before we conclude our meeting.
Thank you, Madam President. As a director, this will be the last opportunity to have to address everybody as a group. So on behalf of the departments that I've had the opportunity to direct or oversee over the past six and a half years, I just want to thank everyone for their continued support on projects and budgets and making things better here in the city. Personally, myself, I want to thank you, everyone in council, the mayor, for the opportunity that I've been given and the continued support and everything that I've received from council and the cooperation over the last six years. I thank you very much, and good luck to all of you in the future, and God bless, and good night.
Thank you, Director. Thank you for your service to our community. We appreciate it, and we hope that you enjoy your retirement. With that, we will conclude our meeting of the whole at 9:16 PM.